Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, last one of the calendar year 2017, this December 19th. We welcome you and hope you enjoy your time here this evening. We have a quorum of five of seven commissioners present with Commissioners Luthy and Sikowski excused for the evening. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our meeting of November 14th, 2017. Commissioner Quinney.
I move that we approve the minutes contained in the package.
Commissioner Hanson.
I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion in the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero. Just a quick recap, we'll have one meeting in July, one in December. We can add a second one in December if needed, and currently that saves the city $700 trying to do our part. The next item on our agenda, the first public hearing, is Jordan Valley Town Homes Phase Three, 8640 South, 3240 West, preliminary site plan and preliminary subdivision plat, 56 lots on 2.913 acres in a PC zone. Boulder Ventures Development, Jeffrey M. Vitak is the applicant. Is the applicant here this evening? Please, or the applicant's representative, please feel free to come forward. Please state your name for the public record and present the application.
Hello, my name is Robert Miller. Thank you very much for having us this evening. We are the architect for the project, Studio PVA. Our address is 1575 Gilpin Street, Denver, Colorado.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There we go. So the project is located at the Jordan Valley Station, at the TOD site, I'm sorry. Is there a... Excuse me while I figure out. Okay, perfect, thank you. So the location of the site is here. This is the NOVIE project that was also developed by Boulder Ventures. This is the RTV parking garage, or excuse me, the UTA parking garage. And then this is the location of the site. We are talking about 56 townhomes, all of which are two or three-bedroom townhomes at this location. We had originally looked at there being two phases, but right now, the subject is just the first phase here. The second phase has not yet been started, and I'm not sure if that will continue forward or if there will be a different use on that side, a different time. So right now, we're just talking about the first phase, looking at 56 townhomes. This is a T-SOD site. This is a rendering of the project. We have done everything we can do to create a nice front-entry location with a stoop, some fenced-in private yards for the townhomes, bring masonry elements to really create a sense of permanence within this location. This is a site plan. We have Han Drive here to the north, 3240, and then B Street, which is 8640 South, and then 3200 West. So we have townhomes fronting the street here as we come into the TOD site, and then we have the loop road here, what's being townhomes fronting that frontage as well, and then townhomes fronting 3200. They all have private entries, private padios along all the streets. Then we do have townhomes as well that look into a private open space with a pool amenity, a pool building amenity, bathrooms, changing facilities, et cetera, for the project. This is an example of the architecture for the four-unit building. So we have a four-unit building, a six-unit building, excuse me, a six-unit building, and then an eight-unit building on this project. So this is the architectural style of the four-unit building. We are proposing that we come up to the upper level here and do rooftop decks as well, so we'll show you those in a later slide. But once again, we have aggregate entries coming in off the streets. We have both a patio space addressed by the living room or access from the living room space here, and then some additional private patio space at the ground floor as well. The colors and the materiality is very much in keeping with the T-SOD site, very much in keeping with the existing NOVIE site, as well as some of our later architectural buildings that you'll be seeing here in the next month or so. So we're all pretty excited about this architecture and bringing all this architecture together as we continue to build out the TOD site. So this is, once again, the six-unit building, and then the eight-unit building. 24% of the site is dedicated to open space. Once again, that would be a pool deck, private padios, private open space, and then open space around the perimeter of the site as well. These are the rooftop decks that we were talking about. So there's a stair that comes up here. There's no internal space really at this level, and then you come up to a rooftop deck here that would overlook the street in many instances or into that pool courtyard. So pretty exciting space, and then just wonderful tremendous mountain views to be taken advantage from those rooftop decks. Just be a great panorama. Clubhouse, once again, just with a limited amount of amenity space, pool equipment, bathrooms, et cetera. So it's 2.93 acres, 25%, 24% open space. We are providing one guest parking space per four townhomes, one bicycle space per three townhomes, 56 total units. And then the other thing I didn't really talk about is both its adjacency to the light rail station as well as regional trail. There is a regional trail that rounds along this area and then comes along 3200, so we have a great access to that regional trail and then to the light rail station, which is at this location. So we are glad to answer any questions on the project.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions for the applicant at this point in time? Commissioner Green.
On one of your slides, you briefly went through it. It shows that there's 24% open space?
Yes. So once again, the bulk of that's going to be within the space here that has a pool deck within it. There'd be a pool fence around the pool deck, but the rest of this is open. Then a lot of that open space is along 3200 West. Once again, the regional trail will be coming along 3200 West at this location, a little bit along Han Drive, and then the street frontages as well.
Intuitively, that's not 24% open space from my perception, but I can see where you came up with that, so.
Anything else, Commissioner Green?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Yes, parking, are you providing a single garage, double garage?
Each townhome has a two-car garage, so there are two cars per garage, and then there's some additional visitor parking at the site, as well as the Jordan Valley Development Plan allows us to count parallel parking along the street towards our visitor parking requirement as well.
I thank you.
Anything else for the applicant? Thank you for your presentation. We'll reserve some time for you after a public comment if there's anything else you'd like to address.
Okay, great, thanks very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Gardner, the presentation from City Staff Place. After you fasten your seatbelt.
Yes, no smoking either, but I really don't have a lot to add other than what Mr. Miller did, but what I want to say is that the subdivision plat contained in your staff report, each of the units, each of the three-level units will be privately owned, and so this will add an owner-occupied element to the Jordan Valley TOD. And so everything else you see on the site plan, the green space between 3200 West and the green space really surrounding the whole project, plus the inner courtyard open space, that'll all be common space for all of the owners, and so what the owner will actually have is just their unit with their garage, and so the rest of it will be common in nature. Getting back to Kelvin's comment, I know that all of the Jordan Valley TOD is planned to work in concert with one another as far as the open space. This open space buffer, which I think is a very good buffer along 3200 West, as Mr. Miller indicated, does have a regional trail, which will run along Bingham Creek as you get to the south, and which will be a much larger open space area for the entire project. Now, is it going to be open space in the sense that it's soccer fields and baseball fields? No, but it will be an open green buffer, so it's not buildings right up to the sidewalk, and so... And other than that, I think this is a fine addition to the TOD, and it meets all the ordinance, and I recommend approval of the Enclave Townhome project.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Questions for City Staff, starting with Commissioner Quinney, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just piggybacking on Commissioner Green here. So we're at 24% on this open space, and we're at 24% by counting everything that's on the exterior and that courtyard. We're not using that rooftop space as open space.
Correct.
This just seems really hard for me to get my head around that this is almost a full-fourth of the project is considered open space.
It does look deceiving, but if you count the square footage, it does calculate out to that. It's not including the decks because those will be private. They'll be private. Each deck on the rooftop will be that owner's deck. It won't be a common space, so.
Commissioner Green.
A couple of... At least one comment and then a couple of questions. And this, the comment may be is that in the future, what we, and I know we're relooking, we wanted to look at, relook at the PC zone, may just be something that we want to look at, that if something's going to be really narrow and skinny, we don't want to count that as open space, but that's a decision that we can look at later. The question that I have is, it goes to the staff report, criteria number five, on page nine of the staff report. It talks about the traffic impact study that was performed for the overall Jordan Valley TOD project, and it gives us a summary of the findings, and it said that the main east-west T... And I'll start with, number one, it's going to add 1,400 trips to the roadway network. The main east-west TOD intersection with 3200 West will need to be signalized with the completion of the project. I guess my question is, are we talking about the completion of the project or the entire T-SOD overlay? Are we talking about this particular part of the project?
The development agreement that we have with the developer calls for a signalized intersection there at a time when the project itself, the entire TOD, has reached a magnitude that it warrants a signal at that location.
So that's the entire TOD. Then in number three, it says that a right-turn pocket needs to be added for the westbound approach at Han Drive. Have we added that right-turn pocket?
No, that's one of the things that we're aware of and we're addressing with this current review.
And then number four, I guess this is the one that I have a question about. It says 90th South does not need to be widened before the completion of the project, however, by 2017 it'll become necessary. We're 2018, it should be necessary. Where are we at with the widening in 90th South? I know that's a UDOT issue, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure I fully understand that comment. 90th South currently has all of its widening elements. As part of this project, when they first came in and they built 3200 West, there were improvements out on 90th South, there were islands installed, there was a traffic signal installed at, excuse me, 3400 West to facilitate access to this development and to the college, and the hospital subsequently relocated their main entrance onto 3400 West. So my understanding was that the improvements to 90th South were complete.
Okay. I'm just, I was just wondering where that came from.
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact wording of that note. I don't think it's referring to a future widening of 90th South from five to seven lanes. That's a significant event that would be done more on a regional basis rather than project-related.
Because 90th South is as wide as it's going to be for the next several years? Is that what we're saying?
Quite, yes, for quite some time, yeah.
Particularly with the new Bangor intersection?
I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Yes, I'm a little confused on this B Street. Where does it go, or is it just, I don't recall a street there.
Oops. So B Street is this one right here. So it runs...
It's just within the project or not?
No, it currently comes off 32 right here and then runs to this loop road. So you can see that this is where the project will be, so it's this street right here, the one that exists, so.
Hey, thank you.
Commissioner Green.
And so as part of this project, do I read this, that we are going to require Han Drive to be completed? That's one of the conditions?
Yes, to the satisfaction of the City Engineering Department. Now, it was shown on the development plan, but preliminary talks on that have been just being a one-way drive into the project and not a way to come out of the project. There's a property, private property owner to the north that's not part of this project that doesn't want to, at this time, have his property taken by a street, and so it'll just be a one-way connection on Han Drive in there.
Okay.
Any other questions for City Staff? Seeing none, we'll open the topic to the public comments section. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please feel welcome to come to the podium. Seeing no comment, we'll close that and ask the applicant, is there anything else that you would like to mention, given the questions and comments from City Staff and Planning Commission members?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to add one point of clarification. The Jordan Valley Development Guidelines require 10% open space as an aggregate for the entire master development, so that this project, whether it has 24% or whether it's maybe slightly less than 24%, or whether there's slivers of open space, I think we can all agree that it has at least 10% open space as required in the aggregate for the entirety of the master development. So I just wanted to clarify that point, that we were exceeding the requirements of open space on this site.
Thank you for the clarification. Well, let's open it up to deliberation among the Planning Commission members, leading to a possible motion.
Well, we're waiting for him to find it. It looks like he found it, so I'll just really quickly. I do, I do want to just say, I do like the project. I like what it looks like. I think it's going to be a good addition in that area, and it'll be nice to have some owner-occupied property out there, not just apartments that we've seen so far. And if the, if the master plan just calls for 10%, then I guess I have no beef with the open space issues either.
Commissioner Green.
I guess the only thing I've got concern with is, is condition 12, that it says that, as shown in the preliminary development plan, Han Drive will be constructed according to the engineering standards. So this goes back to that, so we're only going to construct that as a one-way road for now.
I don't think it'll ever be a two-way road. We're looking at, we're currently looking at that as a one-way road, and the reason for that is because of the left, left-turn traffic out of Han Drive onto 3200 West in the close proximity of the tracks, and that, just the alignment of that intersection. Our traffic engineer is right now recommending that be a one-way road inbound, westbound road.
So it'd only be, it would only be a... So I got to get my direction straight. So it would only be a left-hand turn into the, into the project?
Yes, or a right-in.
Or a right-in, but it only...
But only westbound.
Only westbound.
Right.
How's that going to affect any, will that, will that affect anything else, do we think? I mean, if we've got that many cars coming in and out of this particular area, is that, how's that going to impact the traffic on that intersection?
I don't think that ever was meant to be a full access. Again, that would be probably more of a better question for Mr. Berenowski, the traffic engineer. Again, you know, as we previously mentioned with the, with the main entrance off 3200 being B Street, or whatever it's called, and the potential for a signalized intersection there, that would be the safest, you know, between that and 90th South would be your two best and most safest points of ingress and egress.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I don't quite understand what you were saying about Han Drive being one-way westbound. Is that going to be all the way from 27th? Because it comes from 27th to 3200.
No, ma'am. That would only be from, off of 32, for about, I don't know, 300 or 400 feet until it reaches that loop road. So it's just a section of Han Drive in front of the Polley's Manufacturing Site, right there within the development.
Oh, okay, because I was thinking about all the developments.
No, that would still maintain full.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Green.
And then my last question. I know that we've put the NOVIE apartment in, now we're putting in all these other townhomes, and this may be a better, maybe a rhetorical question, but I wonder when we're going to, do we have any idea when some of the retail, restaurant, medical, professional office uses are going to go in there to balance the residential?
I haven't heard anything at this point, but I know Economic Development's working with them on that. This is a redevelopment area, so to get some of the increment, they have to provide an office or it has to provide some type of mixed use in there, and, but we've had a couple of proposals for some assisted living in there, but that's kind of gone away, but thus far, office or retail, the applicant hasn't proposed anything, so, no, I don't know when that's going to happen.
From my perspective, it just seems, as we've seen other T-SOD areas pop up along the valley, particularly the one at South Jordan, over by the front-runner station, and a couple other places, it just seems like the commercial is dragging behind on that, and I hope that what we don't get saddled with is the developer who says, I am going to put in all my residential, and then he stops because he runs out of money and we don't have the commercial. That's, that's my concern, so, but that's, that'll be a public policy issue later on as we deal with this.
Good discussion. Anybody have a motion? Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you. I'll go and make a motion based on the findings set forth in the staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move the Planning Commission to approve the preliminary plat and primary, or preliminary site plan for Enclave Townhome Development in the Jordan Valley TOD, Lot 5, located at 3222 West, Jordan Line Parkway, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Commissioner Hanson.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Quinney, a second by Commissioner Hanson. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero. I was just looking at that, but it looks like they're both amalgamated into the same staff recommendation, so I believe that takes care of both motions for that particular item. Yes, and thank you for double-checking. The next public hearing, cottages at Parker Place, 7410 South Redwood Road, preliminary subdivision plat, 15 lots on 2.83 acres, and preliminary development plan in an R38SHO. Cannon and Company, Gary Cannon is the applicant. Is he here this evening? Please come forward, sir, and present your application.
I must apologize ahead of time, I'm, I'm a product of the inversion. So if I'm coughing, you'll understand why. I, my name's Gary Cannon, my address is 1397 West, 134th South in Riverton, Utah. I am also a business owner and in the town of West Jordan. I'm in the real estate business. We've been working on this project now, coming on a year. We're coming to you with the preliminary plat as directed by your administration. I'm open to any questions that you may have. I can, I can give you a little bit of brief history of the property. It's been used as an access point for the Drake family goat farm, and there's another business owner at the end of the, at the end of the lane. The Drakes have been a joy to work with, have ended up being good friends with them, will accommodate both businesses and not impact. In fact, it will probably benefit both of them because we are now going to create and bring the road up to city standards. This is a product that, a few months ago, when I brought it to your attention, this is an empty nester product. This is a product, this is a single-family product. They will own their homes, they will have their own yards. Couple things as an example of one of the house plans from the exterior and what it's going to look like. We're very excited about it. We've had some really good interests thus far at this process. Going back to the plat map, meaning we've tried to meet or exceed all city standards. For an example, the fire marshal asked for two fire hydrants, we're putting in three. The city engineer asked for a traffic study to be done on the property. We felt like we could probably contest this and not have one done, as we're only adding 14 homes onto Redwood Road, but we went ahead and had commissioned a traffic study to be done, so, and it met with, met the city standards as well as the, onto Redwood Road. I also have to, I've just been recently asked to be appointed to the Riverton City, planning and zoning, so I will be joining your ranks just a little bit further south, so I'm open to any questions that you may feel like you would like to ask.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I don't see where you're providing any, you call them empty nesters, so this isn't 55 and above, that's just the empty nester term that we use. That's just the empty nester term that we use. So anyone below 55 could also live there. This is not just for senior citizens.
I, I would direct that question back to, to Larry. Uh, if you could, if you could address that, I'd appreciate it. Cause I'm not 100% sure of how that works either.
No, it is in the senior housing overlay. And so it will, it has to meet all the criteria in the zoning ordinance. And one of that is that at least one of the members has to be 55 and older. Now, if they have a child that's younger, that's acceptable, but it's all, it's all spelled out in the ordinance. So it's, it's, that is the focus of it is for senior living, so.
What, the thing that bothers me is there's no place to park recreational vehicles or anything that people that age or younger have. Um, they're, uh, the lots are pretty well covered and you're not providing any parking areas for that type of use.
I, I can't disagree with you there. Uh, based on the, the amount of space we had here, this will probably be, uh, for a, an owner who, if they do have any RV or recreational vehicles, may have to store that in some storage at, at another location.
Thank you.
If, we could do something like that, but it would probably increase the price point of the house. So on this particular project, we haven't addressed that issue.
Is this an HOA?
Pardon me?
Is this going to be an HOA?
Yes, it is.
So part of your HOA requirements could be that they can't park RVs, things like that on the street?
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Very good question. Thank you.
Any other question for Mr. Cannon? We'll reserve some time for you if there's anything you'd like to say after a public comment.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gardner, you have this item as well?
Um, the city council rezoned this property, uh, a few months back, uh, from R18 to R38, uh, senior housing overlay. Uh, I should say the property, let me get my, there we go, the property to the north of Drake Lane. And then the property to the south, uh, they rezoned to a professional office zone. Um, and you can see the slide to the right is an aerial. You see what surrounds it is, uh, more, uh, at least a part, uh, below the Majestic. Is it Majestic or Elementary? Well, it used to be West Jordan Elementary, but it's Majestic.
Right, Majestic.
Okay, and so, uh, there is another project coming in, uh, quite shortly for approval with the planning commission at this point, but it's a, a school-type project. But to the west is, uh, the elementary school, as I said, and the Drake Farm, uh, which is about eight or 10 acres to the west. And then directly to the north is a, an apartment, uh, complex. And so this property was rezoned with that housing overlay. And I think that the, the condition of the zone change was put on that if, uh, final approval is not granted by August of 2018, then we'll revert back to the R18 zoning. And, but as you can see, Mr. Cannon's well underway into getting this, this project approved. And so this is the plat. It's generally the same concept plat that was presented to the planning commission at the zone change. Uh, 14 single-family lots. The minimum of 4,000, or minimum of 4,000 square feet. And so there will be a lot of house on, uh, a small lot. You know, I venture to say this is jokingly, that some of these houses will have more carpet than they do lawn, but, uh, but this is the desired product for many people who want, don't want the big yard. And so, uh, so it'll be 14 homes and then the office, uh, product, uh, to the south of Drake Lane. Drake Lane will be a public, uh, public road that will stub the Drake property. And as you can see, the two driveways will go back, uh, both within, uh, fire code. The fire marshals has, uh, met with Mr. Cannon about this and they do not exceed 150 feet. And like I said, he's putting the, like he said, he's putting the hydrant in. There was an issue of the irrigation ditch, uh, running south of Drake Lane. Here, Mr. Cannon has, uh, taken care of that. He'll be piping that. It won't be blocked off. Nothing will be stopped from flowing through there. And, uh, and so this is, uh, two of the models he proposes building in the senior housing overlay. You can only have a two-bedroom on the main floor. And I think that's in intent for this not to turn into a single-family neighborhood on a very small lot, although it will be single-family and intended uses, um, people who, uh, have grown beyond their children, or if you're like me, my children love me so much, they never leave. And so, um, anyway, and so it's a nice product he's building. It's similar to a lot of stuff that's being, uh, built in the community. It'll be a hardy board site product with, uh, rock. It'll have to meet all of the elements of the, of the zoning ordinance and, anyway. So that being said, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for, uh, Parker Place with the conditions in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Questions for staff, starting with Commissioner Hatch?
Yes, one question. Um, the stamped concrete fence, is that going on the, I want, the north side?
North side and the west side.
West side.
I think anywhere, well, we actually be sneaking around the entire project. Some will be on the east and then I'll be on the north. Anyway, it'll be surrounding the whole project, except on the front, it just.
Even against where the Drake's property line is, there will be stamped concrete? Okay, thank you.
Let's open up this item to public comment. If anyone would like to speak on, uh, this item, please come forward at this time. And seeing none, we'll close the public comment section, bring it back to the commission. Actually, Mr. Uh, Mr. Cannon, is there anything that you would like to say relative to what we've discussed?
Yes, I would. And I apologize, I forgot to point this out earlier. We, we've also went ahead, um, and in, in preparation of being a good neighbor, we created a, if you, off the green pointer here, we created a, a larger turnaround here on the Drake property, um, which will access, will have, will give a full fire turnaround, which we, we could have stopped right there and been fine, as well as we are going to run the sewer, every, the Drake home, there's two homes here, as well as another gentleman here, Tico McCurdy, who's, uh, we're going to stub in the sewer and water line, uh, for their future benefit. They are already connected to water, but we are going to enhance both of those so that they, in the future, if they choose to connect on to the sewer, uh, they will be able to do so. I'd also like to point out that, and we're gonna be talking about this, I'm up next on, on the agenda after this one. The Pearson, um, uh, Pearson's own a home right here. And they, and, and their property line runs about right here where this green line is. They, uh, they came to me and they said, Gary, would you be interested in purchasing the back half of our property? The, the apartments that sit right here, they're apartments and they're, they were built in the eighties. And they're, they're very excited that we were, we were able to come to terms and, and pick up the back half of their, their property here. So their house is going to remain in place. And, uh, the Pearson's parents also own a house out here in the front with an access that comes off of Redwood Road and it tees right here with the fire turnaround. So this will not be, this will not affect the back pasture other than it will increase the back here and act, uh, as another border to the apartments that are here on the north.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
And we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Green.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, um, I move that, oh, yeah, there's two. Oh, there it is. I was looking at the wrong paragraph. Thank you. And upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommended, recommendation to the city council for the cottages at Parker Place Preliminary Development Plan located at 7410 South Redwood Road, establishing a residential density of seven units per acre for a total of 14 single-family residential lots and one commercial lot, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Commissioner Quinney.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor, please, oh, Commissioner Green. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero. Commissioner Green.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary plat for the cottages at Parker Place, located at 7410 South Redwood Road, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Commissioner Quinney.
Second.
Another motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion to this motion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Cannon, for doing business in West Jordan. And thanks for being a good neighbor, as you mentioned. We're the city of the good neighbor, so. This brings us to our last public item this evening. Sunset Villas Rezone, 7292 South Redwood Road, rezone 2.78 acres from R18A, single-family residential 8,000 square foot lot zone, to R38 SHO multifamily residential, eight units per acre maximum density, senior housing overlay zone. Cannon Company, Gary Cannon is again the applicant, and I believe he's here. You, you get to come up and down, up and down. You get calisthenics today, sir.
Thank you. Uh, again, this is, I, I don't wanna say it's identical. Uh, we paid more for this property than we did the Parker property. Um, as we scroll through this, I wanna, I wanna point out again that we are bordering, this is a mirror image to what we're doing on the south of the apartments. Our, our south property line on this, um, is also the apartments. Uh, there are two, uh, large, very deep, uh, properties that may come into play as we go through this process, but then we have the storage units and then the desert industries on our north border, as well as, um, we're almost touching the Drake Farm on, on the north or the southwest corner here. Uh, this particular project is going to have a little higher, I don't wanna say density, a higher price point. We are really going to, um, uh, do we have pictures of the, the pillars in the front? Here's, here's a conceptual plan that we have started. Uh, this has more green space. It has a very elaborate, uh, exclusive-looking entryway. Up here, I believe I've got some pictures. We're gonna put some very big brick solid pillars, uh, adjacent to the, uh, green area here. There's a house, this, from my understanding, um, this has come before you, my understanding, not, this is from the, the real estate agent who's representing this seller, but this is, I think, the third or fourth time, the way she talks, that it has been brought in. Uh, there's a house at the entrance that we were trying to keep in place, but, um, after discussions with Larry, he said the house would have to come down. In doing that, it did lend well for making this entrance. This is gonna be a really cool-looking entryway into this. And I think the price point on this, as much as I, um, was fighting keeping the price down on, on our other one, this one is probably going to be $30,000 to $50,000 dollars higher. Um, we're gonna liven up the exteriors a little bit more, some steeper pitched roofs, some, um, wider sopping fascias. There's more green space, there's more trees. Uh, we're just, it's, it's a little bit bigger piece of property. We're able to get a little bit more creative with it and, and not affect, uh, any of the adjacent homeowners that, that I'm aware of unless they're here tonight. But I, I'd be very excited. I also wanted to point out too, um, I just built a new office in the West Jordan Office Gateway, uh, about a year ago. We've already filled that office up and we're gonna, you're gonna be seeing a lot of me. Um, we've got another, uh, an acre on 86 South and Redwood Road. That's another project that's come before you that Alpine Homes is doing. Um, I own the property on the north, um, northeast corner of 86 South, right across the street from Blad Nursery. So in the next, you know, six-day mission, I'm gonna be coming through with some design work on a new building there, as well as Larry and I just started working on, uh, property on 13th West and about 70, what is that, 75th? 75th South too. So you're gonna be seeing a lot of me. And I have thoroughly enjoyed working with the staff here. And I, um, I'm very proud to say that we have a great worker relationship. So thank you for letting me voice that, cause I wanted to.
Thank you. Any questions? None at this point?
Okay.
Thank you. And one moment, just one moment here. Okay. Well, thank you. And let's go to Ms. Elgin with the presentation from the city.
Good evening. The parcel, as it's been mentioned, is Zone R18A and it's designated high-density residential. The parcels to the north and the parcels that are just the little cutout there, they are also zoned and designated the same. The parcels to the west and across Redwood Road to the east are also R18, but they are designated medium-density residential. Some of the parcels to the south, the two smaller parcels directly to the south, they are R18A. Can you go to the next slide? And they are designated also with the high density. And then there's the apartment complex that he was discussing earlier. That is zoned R38 and it's designated very high-density residential. As, as we saw earlier, this is the concept plan that the applicant has submitted, and he discussed that in, in depth already. So with that, um, the parcel complies with all the requirements of the proposed zone district. And based on the analysis and findings that are contained in your staff report, staff recommends that the city council rezone the subject 2.78 acres from R18A to R38.
Thank you, Ms. Elgin.
With a senior housing overlay.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Elgin? Commissioner Green.
Two questions. The, the little strip on the far north, and maybe you can help answer that as well. What, what are we doing with that little strip that runs out to Redwood Road?
I have no idea.
Okay.
And I, I, I really, I don't know if it's gonna be, if we're gonna do a land trade with, with one of those owners and maybe pick some up there, but it's, it, it's one of those orphaned pieces that through the years has just ended up there and we, we can't really see a need for gain, putting, um, I, I love having access. I love pedestrian traffic, but something like this, I, it makes me a little nervous. It's very long, it's narrow. I don't know if it, it would, it would bring in, um, I don't know, I don't know if it would be an amenity. We'll work something out, but it will, it will not be there by the time we get to final.
Okay. How wide is that strip?
Seven, eight feet.
Okay.
It's, it's not much. And it's the first time we met, hi Lisa. Sorry. Want me to stand here?
No. Then my second question for staff is, this is, since this is a rezone, are we out, outside, we're outside the normally, normal, look at all the rezones once a quarter type thing?
That, that's land use map. The rezoning can, as long as it complies with the land use map can come before you at any time. If it was, if he was asking to change the land use map.
Anything else for city staff? All right, this is also noticed as a public meeting, a public hearing, so anyone who would like to comment on this item, please feel welcome and invited to come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the public record.
My name is Jessica Pillin. I live in, uh, 7258 South Redwood. It is the property adjacent to the orphan piece.
Thank you.
And I don't know if this is the time or place, but, um, or maybe it's not the- And I don't know if this is the time or place, but, or maybe it's not the place or time, but I have no problem with the rezoning or anything. One of my concerns is that, and I know this isn't approving the concept map, but with the road being where it is there, I know that I personally would like to develop the back part of my property. And from talking with my neighbor to the south of me, most likely it's going to be developed at the back of her property as well. So if that road is there, it doesn't give us many choices. Most likely, we're going to have to do another road out to Redwood, which Redwood is already busy. And I know you guys are concerned about traffic. So I don't know if this is even viable or not, but I think it would be good for the neighborhood in Redwood if maybe that was looked at, if it could. I don't even know if that's available, but just something to kind of put out there.
Well, thank you. Just to ensure that we understand your question, could you clarify what you mean by develop your property?
So currently, with zone, it's my understanding that I can put houses, I can subdivide the property. Mine's a little bit over half an acre. So I would like to put one or two houses on the back of that property. Does that answer your question?
Okay, thank you. And we'll definitely address that and get your response.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section. And let's make sure that we answer that question. Ms. Elgin, would you have an answer to, or Mr. Gardner?
So I think anything, if she wants to talk to Mr. Cannon after the meeting, I think that would be fine since he is the player here. But at this time, I'd focus on the application before us because there's some work that needs to be done before. What I'm saying is I don't want to get too far off on the weeds with this because we could talk about a lot of different concepts, but I think that might be appropriate if she talks to Mr. Cannon after the meeting or some other time. Because the planning commission's really not in a position, and I would caution against negotiating any type of use of land before staff has really seen it. And so that's just my advice, but however, you can do what you want. And I don't know if Mr. Linares has any comment on that or not.
Great, thank you. That was my assumption. I just want to make sure we always respect public comment and address the items that are brought up. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I'm glad to see that we're improving the looks of Redwood Road. I realize there is a very nice townhouse development across the street from Desert Industries. In speaking to the young lady that spoke about the back of her property, unless she did talk to Mr. Cannon, she's landlocked because that's a UDOT road. They're not going to give her a driveway. So it would be necessary to work with Mr. Cannon on that, either north or south. That's my opinion. Don't work for UDOT, so. But I worry a little that all we're putting in now is senior housing. We're not doing anything but senior housing. That's what you brought twice tonight, and that bothers me that we're not looking at anything but senior housing.
And yes, please, I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to come back up, Mr. Cannon. So anything that you'd like to address?
And I'm a senior, so I'm not against it, but I'm worried that we're going to become a city of senior housing.
Thank you for that. And I'd like to first identify and hopefully assist her in her questions. Is this your property here?
No, it's the one south of that.
This right here?
It's right with the orphan.
Right here?
Right there.
Okay. Right now, she's landlocked, you know, as far as subdivision goes.
And she is not landlocked. She has access from Redwood Road. And so I don't want the perception to come out that the planning commission is approving anything that's landlocked in any way because it is not.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, she's not landlocked. And I'm really, I'm not a numbers person, but I am a statistics person. And I brought this to, this number to you, and I apologize for my redundancy, but I just want to tell you, 10,000 people a day in the United States are turning 65. 90% of them do not have a viable option to find alternative housing. I'm a product of this. I'll be 53 on Saturday. My parents are in their 70s. This product is absolutely, it's perfect for, there is such a pent-up demand for this. It's so interesting living in Riverton and listening to the feedback of a lot of the owners there who are saying, all you're doing is townhomes and all you're doing is high-density housing. And so we go out, we search out to find a product that is single-family that will appeal to the retired community where they can feel like they have some ownership and they don't have to go into a condominium or they don't have to carry a five or a six or a 7,000 square foot home. This is meeting, I'm not aware of a lot of emptiness or stuff, so, and I apologize if there's a lot going on in West Jordan that I'm not aware of that you guys are approving. I felt like this would meet the demands of the consumer right now. And it's, this is ownership, you know, this isn't apartments and this isn't townhomes. And those aren't bad things, but I feel contrary to that, that this is a product that is needed bad. There's not enough of it. And I feel like I found a good product that will work here. Thank you for your question.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Yes, please feel free to sit down. Make yourself comfortable. Commissioner Green.
Couple of questions. If this were R18, how many houses could we actually put on it by not going to the R38 senior housing overlay? With a quick math.
I think Legacy Grove had seven houses on it, seven or eight, but some of those were larger lots.
And we're talking about 14 here?
Uh, yeah.
16?
16, yeah.
Okay.
But this is, even conceptually, this is better designed than Legacy Grove was.
I guess the two concerns that I have, and it's before the person stood up and testified in front of the council, my concern was that, is that we've got that void in the middle and how do we address that? And I'm glad to see that she might be willing to help develop and if they can come to an agreement with the current developer, that'd be nice if we could work all that out at once instead of trying to do this piecemeal down Redwood Road. So if there's anything you guys can do to work that out, I would encourage you to work that out because I don't like that little box in the middle of the area. And then my next question, this will go to the city attorney. I know that based on the current property lines, we've got that goofy seven or eight-foot strip on the north side. Do we have to rezon that R38SHO? Can we exclude that piece? Because I can just see what's going to happen. Is it something's going to happen and then we got to re-deal with this seven or eight-foot piece and the subdivision and everything else. Can we exclude that strip from the rezon?
There's a couple of ways you could do it, Larry, as I talked, I want to talk to you about it a little bit, too. But one way would be make it a part of this development where it's just landscaped and then maybe we turn it over as a part of a landscape piece to the city to be maintained. And so it's just a landscape portion of the project and it's not this ice or, as far as rezoning it to make it a part of another development or another parcel, that's a whole, that could get complicated.
Well, what I'm wondering is can we say we don't want to rezon that piece? Or do we have?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I see what you're asking me. Yes.
What I'm saying is-
Excluding it from the rezon that you're doing.
Can we exclude that from the rezon?
Yes.
Because I could see, because as things happen on those other two pieces of property, that seven or eight feet is going to come into play. But I just, it seems kind of funny to rezon this eight-foot strip of land, R38, senior housing overlay, because nothing's going to get built in there.
You have the authority that you can rezon a portion of a parcel. You can absolutely restrict it and expand it.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you. I was looking through my packet and I didn't see anything on this, but I'm just acknowledging that there's a canal, like a little ditch on the far west end of this property where this is going to come right up to there. What's the plan with that? Are we going to pipe that? Is it just going to be drawn right up next to that and fenced? What are we doing with that?
Am I drawing right along there?
My neighborhood is just instantly, that's my neighborhood on the west side of this property line, so.
Getting water to here.
Yeah, the people on the north side are here using that water actively. So how is that going to be accounted for?
We will pipe that. And as I pointed out in the past, and I'm certainly not bragging because sometimes I get more heat. I'm president of that canal. And I'm also an appointed board member of the Salt Lake or the Utah Water Association. So I'm a big water guy and I make sure that I get water to end users. And as the Drakes would attest and Larry told on the other one, everything will be piped, probably better than it is now.
Okay.
We'll make sure they get the water. That's a good question, Larry.
As long as we've got the boss here, I guess we can rely upon that, right? We got you on record now as well, so.
I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. And we've already had the public comments section, so we'll bring it back to the planning commission. We want to recognize and acknowledge Commissioner Sokoski arriving. Thank you. Deliberation among the planning commission leading to a possible motion, starting with Commissioner Green.
I understand where Commissioner Hanson is going with the question she asked about the number of senior housing that we've, seems like we've approved lately. That is an exception to every rule that we have. And I understand your concern. In this particular place, I think it fits well with the high-density nature that we've already got it designated on the land use. And I'd rather have elderly people as neighbors any day than teenagers. So that's my comment.
Commissioner Quinney.
I'm just going to go ahead and say, I think this is a great idea. I like it a lot better than what we had going in here before. And I like the idea of attracting seniors to this area. We've already got a lot of congestion on that Redwood Road. I think that this is going to be a good way to mitigate too much extra congestion on there. And there's nothing wrong with bringing in people who might have a little bit more extra income to spend within the city. I think that that's great instead of having to spend it on their kids. They can spend it in the city and they can make a little bit more money for us.
Thank you. And then a devil's advocate point of view always so that we can make sure we're doing the right thing. We've had many conversations about Redwood Road. And even though this is kind of like a flag lot idea, you know, being set back, it's not right on Redwood Road fronting it. But what about all of the turns and traffic going on there as opposed to having it be strictly commercial? Any thoughts to that since that's been a heavy topic of conversation for us on Redwood Road? Commissioner Green.
I'll let Commissioner Sokoski go first.
Commissioner Sokoski.
Thank you. I agree with you where this is a flag-style lot and there's already road access already there. I know it's hard to get access onto Redwood Road and turn-ins and turnouts. I don't know that it's going to add anything more than a commercial lot would add. If you've got a business there, it's still going to bring traffic in and out off of any kind of an entrance there anyway. So I don't personally have a problem with this.
Commissioner Green.
Yeah, I was going to say, when you look at that there's 14, 15 houses, 16 houses here, even if you assume both people have cars and at 55, they're still working, we're not talking about a significant number of trips per day out of Redwood Road. I saw, you know, you're talking probably, you know, 35 outbound trips, 35 inbound trips. But if this were a dentist's office or some other professional office, you'd probably get a lot more trips in and out of that than you would here. So I don't think I really have a problem with the rezon. Like I said, my biggest concern is just the, is creating that island in the middle. And that's why I hope we can get the property owners together and see if they can resolve part of that early on in the process as opposed to later.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. This is for staff. I know part of Redwood Road in this area has an island. Is it in this area? So they can go left or right? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sokoski.
Thank you. And I may have missed this portion of the discussion already, but I'm channeling Commissioner Luthy right now. And looking at the detention area that's right adjacent to Redwood Road. And I'm wondering what kind of landscaping, I show there's some trees and stuff, but what kind of landscaping is going to be there? Where Redwood Road is looking to be kind of a nicer corridor in the future. I don't want to end up with something that's just going to be barren there.
As Mr. Cannon said earlier, he plans to make that part of an entry feature. And so we'll work out the design of that of the subdivision rather than the zone change.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation of the city council to rezon approximately 2.78 acres from R18A to R38 senior housing overlay multifamily residential eight units per acre, senior housing overlay excluding the north strip. That's why I said approximately 2.78, excluding the north strip on the property located at 7292 South Redwood Road.
Commissioner Quinney.
I would second that.
Thank you. Discussion to the motion. Question, do we need to be more specific on that seven-foot strip, Mr. Gardner or Mr. Linares?
No. We'll get a legal description for the property excluding that. So we'll put that in there, JIS with the legal description. We'll just exclude that little piece out. So no problem.
Great, thank you. Any discussion further to that motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. And thank you again, Mr. Cannon, for being here and doing business in West Jordan. That brings us to the conclusion of our formal agenda. We'd like to acknowledge council members Jacobs and McConaughey here this evening. Thank you. Anything that you would like to mention to the planning commission? And we thank the public for being here. Thank you, city staff. We want to wish one and all happy holidays. Been a pleasure working with all of you this calendar year. Hope everyone is safe and enjoys time with friends and family. And if there's no objection, I'll move that we adjourn, stay adjourned to January 2nd. Commissioner Quinney.
Just wanted to say Godspeed to Commissioner Sokoski. We'll miss you.